Good morning. We'd like to welcome everyone to our Mesa City Council's study session for the morning of Thursday, May 11th. I want that all of our council is present and ready to go for this meeting. The first item on our agenda is to review the agenda we have for our Monday, May 15th meeting. So please, council, look at that document and let's see if we have any questions on that. Mr. Brady, I know we have a staff presentation on a couple of items, including DMA and the hotel. Is there anything else on Monday's agenda that you think we could use?
Well, maybe it's more what's not on the agenda. So an earlier agenda had the five-year CIP. We've removed that for right now. We'll be bringing it back. We needed to make some cleanup on that. So it'll be coming back. But it was on an earlier agenda. It's not on the currently published agenda, so.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions regarding Monday's agenda? Let's go forth. I see a lot of notes.
I guess I do. I do have a question for on 4F. The increase in dollar limit for the roofing repair, is that for the repair itself? Is that the entire increase?
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor, councilmember, go forth. We are expecting to do roofing project at Brown Road Water Treatment Plant, and we didn't have enough capacity to cover that in our current contract. So that is the intent behind it.
Okay, okay.
It hasn't been bid yet, but that's what we're trying to do, is create that capacity.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had on that. I do have one more question.
Okay. I'll note that the only thing that currently not on the consent agenda is the public hearing having to do with the Mesa Town Center Improvement District. And I know we're getting a staff presentation on that in a moment.
Mayor, can I just mention?
Yeah.
We do really appreciate the cooperation we get with the flood control district of Maricopa County is 5C, where they're providing a significant amount of funding to provide for some localized flooding issues throughout the city. We've had a great partnership with them to go and address some of those issues. Mayor, if you remember when you, before you started out, you were walking in knee-deep water in some neighborhoods. And what's the good news is, since we've done the improvements in some of those neighborhoods where we were experiencing that, we haven't had repeat of that. And because of we have this funding coming from the flood control district, we've been able to address several neighborhood flooding areas, and these are just more of those. So I just want to appreciate that they are really working hard to get those flood control district dollars back into the community. So we appreciate it.
That's great. And for those who don't remember, eight years ago, there really were neighborhoods in Mesa that were underwater when we had heavy rains. And I think we all at the time committed to getting concrete in the right places and working better with the county flood control district. And I'm proud to say things are much better than they were. So that's encouraging. Counsel, any other, any questions? Okay. Then moving forward on our agenda, item 2A is a presentation and to discuss the services and accomplishments of the Downtown Mesa Association and their work plan for the upcoming fiscal year. Nancy, always good to have you here.
Lovely to be here. Thank you.
Jeff?
Yeah, thanks.
We see a lot of you. We appreciate you.
You're gonna, I'm gonna have to give an introduction, so you're stuck with me for at least three minutes here.
All right.
Morning, Mayor and Council, Jeff McVeigh, manager of Downtown Transformation. With me today is Nancy Horman, our executive director and president of the Downtown Mesa Association. Our annual update on all things great that DMA is doing and is planning to do in the future, but we also are here because on Monday, you will be holding your public hearing on the annual assessments for the special improvement district 228, which is essentially one of the main funding sources for the Downtown Mesa Association. So as we had discussed last year, when we brought in the new assessment methodology, we didn't think that we would need to increase rates for downtown for the next several years. And as promised, this year reflects no change in the assessment rates for any of the property owners. There is minor changes in the overall assessment because of changes in property. We had some city land that we sold to private developer, and we also had some private land that the city purchased, which resulted in, you know, a few hundred dollars here or there difference over the course of last year. In total, 540 parcels are being assessed with, for a total amount of $383,000. In addition to that, the city of Mesa self-assesses ourselves as one of the largest, as the largest landowner in downtown. We self-assess for another $241,000. And in addition to that, there's another $350-ish thousand dollars that we provide DMA through contract for parking enforcement and other enhanced services over and above the clean and safe that they do as a base level service. So with that introduction, I'd like to hand over to Nancy so she can tell you all about the great things that happened last year and what our plan is for the coming year.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, pleasure to be here today. This year was a banner year for downtown. It has been amazing, the trajectory that it has been on, and that is really due to everyone working together. And I say this very, very distinctly. I have never had a relationship with a city like the DMA has with the city here, and we accomplish so much because of it. So to start out, we'll talk about what's happened this year, and we've approved the appearance of safety in the district. We have had our clean team out there. We always say, if you think something's clean, if it looks clean, you know it's clean, if you see somebody cleaning it. So that has always the clean, the broken windows theory, keeping downtown clean. It's almost pristine at this point. It really keeps things, keeps the vandalism away, keeps the graffiti. We do have a lot of graffiti, but we get it out within 24 hours. So just, we'll go on. Now, our clean team has had wonderful experiences downtown. They interact with everyone. Almost all the merchants downtown know them, know them by name, but they do do a lot. And this is what's, just in the last year, the calls that they've had, what they've done, and the quality of life issues have been, we've been cleaning a lot of encampments downtown. And as things are happening in downtown Phoenix right now, and they're closing things up, we are seeing an influx of the homeless down here. And it does add to the cleanliness necessary down here, and so they're always out there cleaning up all the time. And this year, thanks to the city, we were able to have Officer Pat, our favorite, walk around downtown, and it made a huge difference. He, everyone knows him. He goes in and talks to everybody, but there's a response time. Our merchants feel so much safer, and we are so excited about the proposal that the police department had brought to you for next year for their engagement team. I've been meeting with them, and Jeff and I have been meeting with them. We're putting a whole program together for them to be beat officers downtown, but they're not police. They are friendly, they are hospit, they're going to be hospitality and PD trained. So they're going to be on the streets all day, and that makes a huge difference. Officer Pat was exceptional, and it made us realize what it would take to make downtown better. We took our branding, and we used two students from Benedictine, and they were part of Kahoots, and they designed our banners that just went up downtown all over. One of the students was a foreign exchange student from Brazil, and he brought his mother down here when she came to visit and showed her all the banners, and she was crying. She was so proud. So it's really added a vibrancy downtown with all the colors. And we will be changing them out when other things come, but these are our banners that will be there when there's no events. We have our parking program, which, we took this picture before electromechanica recalled all their cars. And so they did give us 100% of the money back, and yesterday, we took delivery on a very small electric Fiat that we'll be driving around downtown. And it will be wonderful, and she's much happier because the other one was a enclosed motorcycle. This is an actual car. So the parking program, it is still something that you will see when we get to our priorities. Parking is one of our issues that will never go away. Then the media this year. The media, we have a wonderful team in Evolve, and they have gotten an amazing amount of press for us this year, and they've worked very, very hard to make sure that they stay within our brand, which is uniquely local. And we are getting to be known as the place to go that's different from every place downtown. You know, you go into most of the cities, you've got the same restaurants, the same clubs, the same bars, the same breweries. You come here, we're all different. We're uniquely local. So they've had a banner year of press, mostly for our breweries. That's really where the focus has been this year. But we have gotten, go to the next slide, because this is something that, I really need to read this to you. This is what was in Phoenix Magazine, and it was, "Nowhere in the Valley, can you walk more easily between a working brewery, two breweries taprooms, and the cidery than Main Street in Mesa? Add some of your favorite eateries, and downtown Mesa emerges as the crown jewel of the valley's craft beer scene." That is quite an accomplishment for our breweries, and they've done such a great job. And next. What we've done, you will see these in our kiosks. They went up yesterday. These are all the awards that all of our merchants, breweries, restaurants, stores have won over the last year. And there were so many of them, we had to make six banners in order to get them all up there. Our goal, as if I can raise some money, is to take our big giant banners that are on Main Street and put these on those all the time, so people can see that, who we are and what we have down here. So it's, the colorfulness of what we're doing is very vibrant down here, and people have noticed it. This year, Jeff's team and my team, we did a broker tour. It was our first broker tour. Councilmember Duff joined us and spoke. We walked around downtown, and we know it was a learning experience even for me, because as the conversations went and the questions were asked, we learned a lot about what their people are looking for down here. Our unfortunate but fortunate situation is, we don't have a lot of spaces for rent. We're almost full. So with the influx of what's coming with Melody on Main, we will have some, and they're actively leasing right now, so we do have some spaces, but almost everything downtown is leased. We, our job is to activate downtown, so we do it in several ways. First, we sell gift cards. This year, we had a little bit of a downturn in our sale of gift cards, because during the Christmas holidays, it rained, and so we didn't have the influx of people coming down here, and you'll see that with the next promotion. But we do sell gift cards, and that money goes directly in the pockets of our merchants. People buy it. It can only be used at the participating merchants, so we are selling those and directly benefiting the merchants. We did several walking crawls this year, and we do our Shop Small Saturday, which we really do it for the whole month of December. And if people sign up, if they spend $100 in downtown, they get stamps, and everyone gets put into a raffle to win a prize. And this year, we sold $44,000 worth of merchandise during the Shop Small promotion. So it's a wonderful way to get people to embrace downtown. But our downtown is as successful as it is because of the citizens of Mesa. They have embraced downtown, they support downtown. We are one of the only cities in the valley that did not lose a merchant during COVID because our citizens came down here. They supported everybody, they kept them all in business. Halloween is always a big thing down here. Our merchants love it, they all, they help out, they give out candy. We had about 5,000 people come through this year. And these are all guestimates, and just know they're a PR number, and I will always use the PR number. We had, and that's always very successful, and the, we get all ages coming through, and it goes fast. Next. We work with the city on Mary Main Street, and our part of Mary Main Street is we do the Mary Makers Marketplace, which is a marketplace that's there during the holidays. It was very successful this year, so Parks has asked us to do it every weekend before Christmas, so we're going to expand that in the next year. We also did our first ceremonial menorah lighting, and it was attended by 80 people, which was wonderful. And then the city came up with a program that we helped move around. It was very successful, and people would see my staff walking around with Bingles, going to hide him, and they would all go, oh, there's Bingles! They knew what was going on. The fun thing was that, there's a picture there of him on the roof of Gus's. He was up on the dinosaur. And so we had him moving all around downtown. It was a fun event. I Love Mesa Day, which was the brainstorm of our city manager, has been so successful. It is an event that our people love tremendously. It's a family event. We did have music at night. I think we're going to only make it a family event next year, not doing the late-night bands, because it really is about the families. You could not walk around downtown. You couldn't get into anything. And everyone at that point told us it was their best day ever. So then we do Easter, and Easter is also another fun event downtown. You get to come have pictures with the Easter bunny. And then this year, we got involved in helping out with the Mesa Music Festival, which was, I will say to you, in all the years I've been doing special events, I've never done an event that has met every goal we set out for it, and it did. It was an amazing two days in downtown Mesa. I've never seen that many people on our street coming out of all of our businesses. Even our retailers stayed open late at night. There were so many people here. It was wonderful. And we're going to work on something next year to try to make it a little bit easier because people were walking from bar to bar with their glasses. That's not a good thing. We're going to try to see a way to make that legal.
I like that approach. Way better to try with more cities.
Exactly. So, and we've looked at a couple of things from other cities, because good ideas are borrowed and great ideas are stolen, so we have a great idea that we want to bring back to you. But just, just looking at that, the testimonials we got on this day were unbelievable. When they were telling us how much they loved I Love Mesa Day, this exceeded it by double. And everyone had a great day. Everyone had a great day. And evening. We, we have been doing the farmer's market at the MAC for the last two years. It is very difficult to do a Saturday market because every city has a Saturday farmer's market. So it never blossomed like it should, and it was not cost-effective for us to continue to do it. So what we've done is, we've sold the event to Inspire Farms, which is on Main Street, which is absolutely the perfect place for it. They have all the produce, they have the raw butter, and they're organic shop. They sell chickens, you can raise them in your backyard. But they have taken over the cost, the liability, and the running of the market. And because of that, we have decided that, starting in the fall, every third Thursday, we're going to do a Thursday night market. And that market is going to be not only produce, but community things, crafters, more things. It's going to be more of a community market. But we know that people, the farmers are saying, if you do a nighttime market, we'll all come. So we're going to try to do that this year. And we've worked with other events downtown that were very successful, and we have more and more people coming to downtown to want to do events, and we are working hard on, we worked hard last year on changing some of the things for special events downtown in approvals, but we really have, you know, you have to react to the marketplace, and we have some changes I think we need to look at to make it more effective downtown. So our work plan for this year is basically the continuation of what we've done. Nothing will change in the things that we do normally, but we will be, as we do every year, adding more things. And we held a class for barbecue, and we had many, the people in this room attend the class, and they are certified Kansas City barbecue judges. And so this November, we will be holding that event, and that is something that has really snowballed into, we are going to do an event with the city before this, and with the city and the merchants, and we're going to hold a local barbecue contest with the police, the fire department, departments at the city, and some of our merchants who want to enter it. So we're going to do a test of it this year. We, we had a board retreat, and the following things are the things that came out of the board. I would like to introduce who's with us today. Very excited to have with us our executive committee, which is Tim Sprague and Tina Beatty. Tim is our chairman, Tina is our vice chair, and Susan Stevenson, who is the chairman of our Business Owners Board. And they are what makes DMA work. Our board helps tremendously. They work with us, and we use their priorities, not the staff's priorities. What is the priorities of the stakeholders to do our plans for the year? Next. So these were the things that came out of the retreat, and as you can see, the numbers next to it are, when everybody writes, we write down what everybody says, and then we have them vote on them. And the number one always comes up, and I will tell you, in every city, parking. Okay? Parking is always an issue downtown. It will always be an issue downtown. We have exciting things that Jeff's been working on to make that go away, and we hope that that will make a big difference. We never have, just to clarify, a patron parking problem. We have plenty of parking for the people who come to our downtown. It's our employee parking that we are very short on. So that's where we have to look at, what we can do. But we never have any complaints about, when they come down even for an event, that they don't know where to park. It's always just the merchants who don't have, who don't have enough spaces for. As we expand and we get more and more merchants and more and more residential, we are using more and more parking. And the highest priorities for them individually was an entertainment strategy for down here. And Jeff's team is starting to work on that, and I think it's something that's very important. Things are great if they grow naturally, but we need to help them grow in the right direction. And I think as we've started and seen what the entertainment is down here, which is coming to our restaurants, coming to our bars, coming to the MAC, the comedy theater, that this is something that's very important. So an entertainment strategy was number one on what we put for moving forward. We broke up into groups. They each had their own group, and I'm not going to read these to you. This is something that you guys can all look at at your leisure, but they had their priorities of things that we thought that we could do to make some of this happen right away. And we're starting to implement it a little bit now, but it will be implemented starting in July. And each one of them, we did four groups, retail strategy, parking, micro mobility plan, which is, actually has something to do with parking too, but it's a full plan for parking, a full plan for transportation downtown. Very important for us. And then the entertainment and the variety of vibrancy of what's happening down here. We do not need to revitalize downtown Mesa, we just need to continually vitalize it. So keeping it vital, keeping it active, is the most important thing that we can do to keep drawing people down here. I always say, bring them down 10,000 at a time, and they'll come back one at a time. Okay. The three goals that came out of that, top, top, top priorities that we wanted to let you know what we want to work on, is that creating connections. We have an amphitheater and a convention center and a huge hotel that is not connected to the heart of downtown. And we, with having the MAC, the mix, everything on Main Street, we really need to concentrate on how do we connect that part of downtown to the other part of downtown. You start out with your core, and then you radiate out from the core. It's now time to radiate out and make sure that they know that the rest of downtown, not just Main Street, has many things to offer. So that is the number one priority that we have. And then enhancing the brand, letting people know we are uniquely local. It is one of the things that has really resonated with the press, and it's also resonated with, our retail recruitment comes mostly from our other retailers that are here. That is an amazing thing to me. They're the ones that go out and bring us the next people. And so that's something that is very important, that they understand, they all understand the brand, that's why we made the brand, but they're really embracing it and helping us bring more local businesses down here. And then radiating out from the core is the same thing. Making it so that people know what downtown is. My goal, hopefully, within this next year, is to light the trees on Main Street all the time, from Country Club to Mesa Drive. We want to connect to the temple. It's not in our district, but it is a great asset for us. We want to connect to Pioneer Park, but we also, people want people to know when they're in our downtown and that what's special about Main Street. And Main Street used to, in the eyes of people, stop at, go from Country Club to Center. There's an amazing thing happening from Center to Mesa Drive, and we really need to celebrate that. We need to let people know that that whole corridor is going to be full and vibrant. That's where we are.
Great.
Any questions?
Thank you very much. I'm sure we have a lot of discussion. Councilmember Duff, thank you for sharing downtown with, I get the feeling that we all, everybody hopefully feels a sense of ownership of downtown. Yeah, it's the living room for our city, so we appreciate you letting us all feel a little sense of ownership for downtown. Who'd like to begin?
Well, some years ago, I don't think many would have claimed downtown. I want to thank DMA and Jeff McVeigh's office for their tremendous work. I do remember when I moved to downtown in 2009, DMA was, we talked about participating on the board, some of the residents, and we're just like, who's crazy enough to do that? I'm not doing that, I'm not going, it was so dysfunctional, and there were so many issues of downtown and uncovering it. And today, it is everything we could have wished for, and we have so much more ahead of us, and we're all excited about it and want to be part of downtown. So thank you for the, you know, you're doing great work, and it shows, and it's a remarkable difference.
Thank you.
I do like that we're focusing on the music and art and doing some kind of identity with that and leveraging our investments in the Art Center and the mix, that we are about the arts here. And, and, you know, no one in the down, in the Phoenix area really, I think about, is about music. We are in our venues, but as far as a downtown or a region of having live music, that kind of thing, having an opportunity for local artists to play, and I like that we're growing in that direction. And, um, I like that we're growing in that direction. Um, I just want to note that when I was first reading on the priorities that you had and then the numbers, I was thinking those are the number, your ranking of the priorities, but that was the number of people who felt that that was important. So the higher number is the more important. Okay. Um, trees, that's really good because trees are really cool, make the community cool. So where are we on our plan? I know we wanted to do a tree scape and we're doing the colonnades. It's kind of been on the back burner. Where are we in being able to start doing a tree plan?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Duff, so we have done, with, working with transportation, we have done an evaluation of all the existing trees and planters that are out there. Our first step is that the, actually, the underground irrigation system is just a mess. Um, and there has to be, a lot of it was impacted during light rail construction and never really put back into, uh, original condition. So we have to first go through and do a work, uh, a, a, an effort to improve the irrigation system, which is going to actually be a fairly, um, significant effort to, to get it up to par. Once we have done that, then our intent is to go in and fill in, um, empty planters with new trees, using the, the palette that we had, um, worked on when we created the urban streetscape, um, concept, so that we'll have more, um, I would say deciduous trees versus, um, you know, the littering palobreas. Uh, and then also as palobreas, existing ones are dead or dying, um, that we can replace those. Now, as we work on the facade improvement program, with the, you know, eighteen-ish properties that will be going through facade improvement, we will also be looking at the streetscape in adjacent to those buildings as an opportunity, um, to improve the landscaping and the trees with, with each individual facade improvement.
So we're creating a master plan with the colonnade removal and, and how we can have a contiguous thing of trees within those adjustments?
As, as we're, as we're able to with the facade improvement, knowing that this, without having a wholesale, um, streetscape improvement program, we, doing it piecemeal can only work where there's a long enough section that it, where you're not going back and forth between planters and new, and new streetscape. So it's only going to be where we can get in a long enough section with the facade improvement. So there will still be, um, I think, a long-term need to be considering, continuing to look at that overall streetscape program.
Yeah, I agree that we have to have a plan, but I would like to be confident that all of our changes are resulting in being able to accomplish, uh, getting a tree plan instead of like, oh, and the trees. Um, and then also the mobility plan, I know is one of my things that I'm really pushing for. I would like to check on the status of that and encourage that that, um, especially that when you're looking off of Main, that even the trees are incorporated in that so that we're making those adjustments one time.
Yes. And, and the mobility plan, we are, we are nearly complete with, uh, our draft of our RFQ to select a consultant to work with us in developing the micro mobility plan and, and also we're addressing parking through that planning effort as well.
Thank you. Counsel, Ms. Millsberry.
Um, thank you so much for all your work. This is exciting. The, um, farmer's market, the monthly Thursday night, I love that idea. Is that at Inspire Farms too?
No, that's going to be on McDonald.
That will be on McDonald. Okay. So, cause sometimes when I drive by there, you can't miss it because it's such a cute building, but I always wonder where people park to go to the market.
There's plenty of parking behind it.
Behind it, okay.
Uh-huh. And the road too, there's, there's.
On Main?
No, on, um.
Oh, you're saying the road that goes down the side of whichever.
Yeah, they haven't had any problem with parking for the market. And they have another lot behind there that if they need to, they said they would put DG on it and make it so that people could park it.
Okay. And so, but the Thursday night will be on McDonald, that same area that we closed off?
It, it, it's much more centrally located for all of our merchants and so they benefit more. They're not benefiting from, the merchants on Main Street are not benefiting from the Saturday morning market.
They're not participating in it?
They're not participating. It's not something that they're interested in doing.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's time consuming and it's hard to do booths also and run a business.
Yeah.
So we understand why they don't want to do it. So what our job is to drive traffic down here. So we figure if we move this to.
Closer to where their stores are.
More than where the stores are, they will benefit more.
Okay.
I've, I've even had conversations with, with merchants that would normally participate in a farmer's market, proof bread, for, for, by example. Our Saturday, the Saturday market as it, as it exists today is not enough of a draw to compete with the other Saturday markets that they go and, and sell their bread at. Now, Thursday night market, they will be, um, first one on the list to sign up and, and to sell their bread at during the Thursday night market. And I think Nancy, it wouldn't be a bad idea to, to describe your experience in Thursday night markets in the past.
Okay. Um, the Thursday night markets are a big thing in California. San Luis Obispo started it probably 30 years ago, but I did a Thursday night market in downtown Sacramento, which has light rail running down their Main Street, the same thing. Um, the first night we did Thursday night market, we had 500 people come out and we, we were ecstatic. This is wonderful. By the time we did the third market, and we did it every week, um, it was also called the mayor's market.
You could do that.
The mayor might have been KJ.
Yeah, it was. Sorry, you're not KJ, sorry. But anyway, uh, the second, the third, by the third week, we had 10,000 people a week and for 10 years, we had 10,000 people a week come downtown. And it was the place for neighbors to see neighbors. That's what it's all about. It's not about selling anything. It's not about anything. It's, downtown needs to be our community gathering place and it was so successful in making a community gathering place that, as you guys said, every, there's all sorts of neighborhoods and, and everybody has their neighborhood, but downtown is everybody's neighborhood and we want to make them feel comfortable coming down here to see their neighbors. That's what Thursday night markets are about. It's, it's, and it's also, people like to come out on Thursday night to get their produce for the weekend for when they're entertaining, not Saturday morning.
I've actually attended, um, Thursday night markets in California at different places when I've been on vacation, but what's amazing is like the 20 food trucks that are there.
Yes.
So are we planning on like incorporating food trucks?
We will incorporate some food trucks. Um, most of our restaurants understand that during events, they want us to bring food trucks in. You know, during Mesa Music Festival, I don't think they could have put another person in their restaurants and they were all running out of food. Our food trucks were running out of food. So food trucks are a necessity unless we had a lot more restaurants. And I would kill if we could get the produce from the California Thursday night.
Yeah, no. And the flowers. Um, okay. And then my other question, which I know is on your radar, I just didn't see it anywhere in this, is just our museums. So I just, I know we try to incorporate the museums and all these events and they'll have free admissions and everything like that, but just because I didn't see it on here, I just want to make sure we're.
We are.
They're gems.
Yeah.
So we just need to make sure we're doing whatever we can to connect the museums.
Whenever we do an event, we always make sure that they're incorporated into it because it's, it's, they're our biggest assets.
Yeah.
Okay? Art and culture is what a downtown asset needs to be and by promoting that. But we do that, but we, you know, we have our calendar events, we promote our, if you look at our, um, our social, you know, we're always promoting everything that's going on in all of the museums and our PR firm is always cooperates to get out when something exciting is going on. I, I think we need to do more with them. I think that they are an underutilized asset.
Yeah.
And I agree with you that we should concentrate a little bit more on what we could do to elevate them. I mean, I, from the time I've lived in Arizona and time I had grandchildren, because my kids were too old, I have probably been to those museums a gazillion times.
Yeah.
And it's the only place I go. I mean, we drive from Queen Creek to go to the Idea Museum. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's a huge asset that most of our downtowns don't have.
Yeah. I, and I think over the next few years, as we've invest some money in revitalizing those museums and stuff, it's going to be even better to.
And they're so cooperative. They're wonderful.
Yeah. Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reddian.
Two questions. What's the status of the incubator restaurant, uh, project? And then the other one, is there, is there any permitting or licensing on like live events or, uh, music that we're looking into, uh, that we can be more friendly or more friendly on, on those pieces? Right? So I think, uh, I think we saw, we've seen some, some cities, you know, I think targeting some, uh, like falls or when it's more advantageous maybe to have those events, uh, but maybe, uh, I, I'm not sure if there's more restrictions here or more, uh, opportunities that we can, uh, maybe less regulate those, those, uh, events or live music pieces, right? So.
So start with the incubator and then go to live music.
Yeah. I'll, I'll go with the softball first. The, uh, incubator, um, mayor, Vice Mayor, Herredia, the incubator project, we are well into conceptual design. Um, we are nearly to the point where we have a, a final conceptual design and, and budget that we'll be able to present to you. We just have a couple more steps, um, present to our city manager, make sure that we're in the right direction. Then we intend to bring that forward to council for your final direction on, on moving forward, hopefully, uh, before you go on break. Um, actually, I believe we are, tend to be scheduled for June 15th to present to you an update on the incubator. Related to, uh, event licensing, um, we do have now with the special event, um, office that, you know, a new procedure and process for special event licensing. Uh, there's, I think, a couple of the areas that you're discussing. One is, one is, was it relates to the entertainment music strategy. A lot of that is about, um, helping our businesses and our downtown community understand the value of live music and live entertainment to their business in, 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 in hosting those inside of the businesses, which would not have any special event licensing requirements. It would just be normal course of business. Um, now, related, you know, on the other, the other side of that though, is live music and entertainment that happens outside of the businesses as part of a, a special event. I Love Mesa Day or Mesa Music Festival, or even, um, events that are privately promoted. We are, you know, working with the, under the policy direction that, uh, council provided, I think, late last year or, or early this year in the creation of the, the special event office. It is a, it is a work in progress and we are adjusting as we're going through. We are learning. I, I would say that we're learning as we're going.
Yes.
And, and I think that, that there will be, um, uh, efforts and I think that we will be, be coming back to council at some point to discuss, um, updates to the special event licensing process, at least as it relates to downtown, because downtown is so much more unique than, than the rest of the city as it relates to special events and hosting special events, because it is, it happens in rights of way versus in parks and on private property. So, um, I think I'm kind of dancing around the answer is that, and punting a little bit, is that our intent is to continue to learn as we go through and hopefully come back with an update, um, to the policy for council's consideration here in the near future.
And I will be a little more blunt than Jeff, because that's me. We, I understand the need to make it easier to do things, but what's happening here is the easier we make things happen, the more rogue events we have that pop up. We have a lot of issues with blocking the right of ways and all we really need to do is come up with and what's just, is a better set of rules. So it gives them the opportunity, but continues to have safety. And, um, a lot of things that I, I personally object to is having too many merchants type events on our streets that take away the business from our businesses. And to be able to come downtown and spend a hundred dollars to sell your wares and have that opportunity to, to grab all the customers that we work so hard to bring for our merchants are great, but it's not fair that they're not paying for the brick and mortar, they're not paying for the staff, they're not, we need to promote the businesses here if we're going to be a live and vital downtown. So I think we need to make sure that our rules are fair and equitable, but that they're followed. And that's the biggest issue we have now. We have way too many people who just do whatever they want to do and that's not good for our downtown.
And Mayor, Council, we recall, um, I think we highlighted it in the budget wrap-up, we talked about adding additional code officers. And part of the challenge is, um, some of these events will happen on the weekends or in the evenings and we don't have the staff around that Nancy can call. She can't enforce it. She can complain about it and tell us about it.
Which I do.
So, so we'll have the event licensing, but you know, if someone's parking their table in front of another business or blocking a rightway, whatever it might be, it, we haven't been able to really address the enforcement side of it. So those code, some, one of the responsibilities or one of the ideas with those additional code officers is not only to help during the week, but also to build a flex time during, um, during the weekends and specifically for downtown to be able to be present during these events and be able to say, hey, here's what the license says, you're supposed to stay within these areas or whatever. And so, um, that's part of our way of trying to help support, um, what, how did you say? Making sure it stays in the rules, right?
Yeah.
And, and so we're going to reinforce that with additional staff. That was part of the, um, the addition of those code officers.
I just have a question. So you're talking about vendors that come down but are not connected to the downtown in any way?
Right. Exactly.
Okay. And you don't think that that builds future business or?
I think it does, when you do it, not all the time. Okay? I, I think that, that sometimes it's too much, that you're, you're giving more credence to the outside vendor who's going to come down here versus doing activities or events that brings, uh, business to our businesses. I think it's great to have these other vendors, but what's been happening is they set up on the sidewalks in front of our businesses.
Is this unique to Mesa for some reason?
Yeah. It is.
Why?
Cause we don't have, as, as Mr. Brady said, and it's changing now because of the code enforcement.
Okay.
We haven't had anybody watching downtown on the weekends. So everyone knew that from Thursday night at six o'clock until seven o'clock on Monday morning, they could do whatever they wanted. That was the issue. That is changing thanks to the city manager and we are going to enforce. Every city I know has that enforcement on the weekends. Their, their special events office or their code enforcement are always out there to keep it safe and to keep it fair and equitable. But we have lots of rogue people that just set up anytime they want to, blocking sidewalks, doing things. That's been the issue. It's not the special event that's down there. It's the, or the special event that used to set up along Main Street, which we no longer encourage them to do. We want them to be on McDonald and only people that are artists selling their wares. No resale items, no anything that might be in conflict with any of our stores can be on Main Street anymore with the new rules. And that's, that's helping tremendously.
Thank you. Any other comments, Council? Yes, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. So remind us the boundaries of the DMA.
Mesa Drive to Country Club, University to Broadway.
Okay.
One square mile.
One square mile. I knew that, but I was testing you.
Okay.
You know, most of us.
It's early enough in the day for me to remember.
Well, good. Everybody's like a test, so, you know, some of us grew up in Mesa and we valued our downtown area. You know, I have fond memories of coming here and, and just, this was the go-to place in Mesa. And, and we're, you know, I'm excited about the development committee and changing, you know, the face of the downtown. Mr. Sprague, thank you for your work and others, but it's setting the precedent for the future, I believe, of our downtown. And, you know, what there's more synergism comes for the future and more development and more opportunity for the DMA and our downtown businesses. But, um, just, just some comments here. You know, I utilized the light rail recently to go over to ASU and it was very convenient. I parked here and went over and got on and went to an event, but I was really not impressed because of the lack of enforcement on the light rail. It was, it's pretty, it's, it's not comfortable to ride at certain times and, and I think you agree. So that might, you know, shy some ridership away, but I'm hoping with, you know, the development of. development of the apartments and things downtown, ASU mix and others, that hopefully they'll be pushed away. But that brings up to my other point on slide four, when we talk about the policing that you're, you need to do within the DMA boundaries, that maybe you could go more a little bit into the data that, I mean, what are some of the things that you're encountering, not only ambassadors, but the police themselves?
I, I think most of the things that we encounter down here, and I say this with a grain of salt, because I used to run downtown San Francisco, is the homeless issue. And I look at it very differently than most people, because I, I, I find it, we don't have a huge homeless problem down here, and that's different from most cities. And so, but the, the, the things that we have is early in the morning is our biggest issue with the homeless on the street, we don't have, we don't have panhandlers down here, people are not asking for money. But there is a sense of insecurity because of, if you, I agree with you, if you light, ride the light rail now, it's a little scary, but I think one of the things that we need to do is start to do some promotions about what they can get if they, excuse me, light, ride light rail to an event. That's something that we used to do, and we would, you know, we, you get a free cup or you get something if you show your ticket, but if we can get masses of people on the train, it will push some of the other people off, and it might make people feel a little bit more comfortable the next time they get on, because it's not comfortable to get on as a single person. I, I'll, if I need to go to downtown, I'd much rather just get on light rail than drive down there, but I won't do it anymore. And that's scary, if I won't, and I, you know, I'm a downtown person, I don't get scared by homeless, but that is a very uncomfortable situation.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that comment. You know, I, just an observation, I was at a meeting here downtown, I saw a family leaving the Delta, a family of about five, and it was probably eight, eight-thirty in the morning, and I was wondering, where are they walking to? I mean, are you looking for breakfast, are you looking for coffee? And so I, I think some of the connectivity that you're talking about is important, not only for the hotelers, but for the convention center, to allow people to, you know, walk into the downtown area and then enjoy some of the, the amenities that we have. But I'm down here quite often and I enjoy the variety of the programming for not only my family, but others that I bring here, let them see the transformation. It's slowly coming, I mean, I'm looking forward for everything that's going to be happening, so my comment is keep up the good work.
My father used to tell waiters all the time, if they asked them, how, how was the meal, he would always say, so far, so good.
Yes.
So that's, that's so far, so good.
Good, thank you.
We got more to do, lots more.
Thank you, great presentation. I, I, I'm actually impressed at the pace of the progress and the pace of the success that we've seen downtown, because it really is an overnight sensation that has been decades in the making. But it's going to continue to be exactly that, because there still is lots to be done, and, but the pace is really quickening. And I, so I, I give the credit to that, to the, to you two, and to Mr. Brady, and to the profession, the commitment to professional leadership that we've made for downtown. I think one of the challenges we had years ago was no clear direction or no clear commitment, you know, to, to making it better, and, and that's certainly, that's the opposite of, of the case now, so on holidays and weekends and special events, I think we've all had the, the experience of looking around and pinching ourselves and saying, this, it couldn't be any better. You know, it's wall-to-wall people and it's really exciting, so, and I'll also appreciate our, our new special events group, I think that's really added to the orderly approach and the professionalism that, that is so evident with downtown. Thank you to the DMA board, thanks for being here, Tim and Susan and Tina, we really, that, that's the, the formula, you know, we want to be the wind beneath your wings, you know, to make this happen. This is not a, if, if, if this is a top-down, city-driven approach, it's not going to be as successful. I appreciate the buy-in of, of DMA. I've owned a business in downtown Mesa for a long time, and I've been, I've paid a lot of DMA assessments very happily, and so I, I think we all understand that, that we are expecting a higher level of service, we don't want it to just be a golf cart, you know, anymore, it, it's got to be pretty intense, it's got to be leadership, it's got to be managing things, and so I appreciate that we're not raising rates, but on the other hand, I think a lot of us are saying, when can we raise rates? Because we want more, a higher level of service from DMA, we expect, you know, that we're going to need more engagement from DMA.
Thank you.
You bet. And I can, we've got a lot on the cusp here, I mean, Eco Mesa, the grid, Melody, when CPLC breaks ground, the Post is going to come online quickly, the Shrine House we were just talking about, I mean, there's some major events about to happen, like I say, over the next year, or a year or two, that is just going to intensify everything that we've been talking about here. So I, I know that we're making progress on our parking situation, and I'm looking forward to that coming to pass. The downtown ambassador situation again is just, I think that's really going to distinguish us from other downtowns, and, and the concern that we've been talking about, about security, I think is going to get better. When we, when we start utilizing the light rail more, it's going to get better. And I do utilize the light rail particularly when coming to downtown events, because I think we're all, we've got crowd control issues sometimes, and it really is much smarter to park at a, at a light rail station and go one or two stops into downtown Mesa, have all the fun you want, and then escape all the parking issues by hopping back on the light rail. So I think people are catching on to that, and, and so it's just very encouraging to see, again, this, this overnight sensation that's, that's standing on the, the shoulders of a lot of giants, and, and again, I think that we're going to continue to see, we're not going to recognize downtown two or three or four years from now, you know, compared to what it is now. So great job. Ms. Millsberry.
Sorry, one more thing, and I know I brought this up before to Jeff, but since you're sitting here, I'm going to bring it up again, but I just, I worry sometimes the storefronts when you're walking down downtown Main. So you're like, yes, yes, ah, and then like, so it doesn't keep you moving, keeping walking, and so there's some empty storefronts, but then we have the issues with businesses who just don't have a great storefront, because they're a wedding facility or a venue or whatever. So what's your plan for that? Like, can we clean up vacant storefronts? Can we, like, what, what can we do?
Coincidentally, this afternoon, I, we are having a meeting with an, the arts organization, an arts organization that's been working down here, they did the masks in the incubator window, they came to us and we're working with them, we want to do artist displays in the empty storefronts in some of our other places, and we want to keep that art and culture theme down here, so by filling our windows with art instead of somebody, you know, sticking paper up there-
Or a wall that's peeling and falling apart, or I don't know.
Yeah, and so that's something that we're working on right now to try to help our storefronts a little bit. In other cities, some things that I've done before is I've brought in window decorators and let them consult with each of the stores to help them rearrange their windows. We beg, beg for them just to leave their lights on at night, but they don't do it. But, you know, when you're walking down from restaurant to restaurant or, having the lights on makes such a big difference, so we're still going to be harping on that for them.
So, because I, like, I, I know if you look ahead and there's three blank storefronts or something, you're just not going to keep walking, right? And I, and I know we have a challenge, because our downtown is so much bigger than a lot of other people's downtown, so I, I get that that's a big challenge or whatever, but I just think we really need to clean up some of the storefronts. And then I just remembered another, one more thing, why are we all shut down on Mondays?
I don't know.
But like, who needs to change that? Like, everyone, I just-
It's always that catch-
I know, but like, why do they all think they should be closed off?
It's that catch twenty-two. They don't stay open because no one's here, and no one's here because they don't stay open. So we're, even Jeff has said this, they're starting one at a time, we're getting a little bit more-
Well, like, at what point did they shut down on Mondays?
I don't know, I think it's always been that way.
Oh, yeah.
Really, just always?
Employees starve to death on Mondays.
I know, there's nowhere to eat.
I mean, if, if you take a list, a difference three years ago, I mean, as we came out of COVID, it was different, but the difference in this last year of Sundays is unbelievable. There never used to be anybody here on Sunday, but there are people here, it's crowded on Sundays now. Our hopes are, you know, we, we are uniquely local, we're mom and pop stores, they don't, they need a day off.
So to be open seven days a week.
You know, that's the difference, and maybe we just need to promote more that we're not open on Mondays, so we don't have people being disappointed.
Or have special events on Mondays.
Or have special events on Mondays.
I will, I will add just a couple thoughts, for the, related to vacant storefronts, they won't be vacant very long. Anything that you see vacant now, it either has a lease in place and they'll be working on the build-out soon, or they're very close to having a lease in, in place, so I think within the year, we'll probably have the vacant storefront issue probably addressed. Related to Mondays, you know, it is a chicken and an egg problem, but they also, to some degree, there has to be a proven demand on Monday beyond just the city employees wanting lunch. And, well, I, I'm amongst that, that issue too, but I, I do think two thousand new residents in a year's time will make a difference, and then another two thousand new residents in another year's time will make a real difference as to driving demand and making it, proving up that, that it is worthwhile to stay open on Monday, because that's what I hear, is that if I open on Monday, I'm just losing money. And so we have to help make it so the economy, or the, that there's enough of a base of, of business available that Monday's viable.
So I'm going to probably get in trouble for bringing this up, but if, if we have two thousand more people that are going to live here in the next little bit, are, hmm...
They all have parking built into their projects, so-
No, 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 I wasn't even going to bring up parking. I wasn't even going to bring up parking, I know, I thought, I bet you thought that's where I was going. No, 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 I, um, are we, hmm, are there other opportunities for a grocery store other than Site Seventeen, since that is not going to happen anytime soon, and I think that's where we thought we were going? So I just, that is all I hear from people, is that they want a grocery store down here, and so are, do we have any other options?
Grocery store remains the only thing that you can get full consensus in downtown on.
Right, so why aren't we doing it?
We need ten thousand people to live here before a grocery store will even look at a site.
So grocery stores, the margins on groceries are so tight that, that they look at the demographics so closely, they have, you have to really get a long ways, I mean, downtown Phoenix and downtown Tempe, knowing the, the level of population that they have, grocery stores within only the last year or two. So it's, it, it's not an easy, it's not just a, we want it and it will come kind of thing, we have to help create the environment in which the grocery store is willing to, to be attracted. Now, having said that, we do have at least one project on Main Street that will be starting construction here, I think in the next month, that has made it, has stated to us that they intend to have a small grocer on the first floor.
But that's the one further west.
No, that's right on Main Street, just east, just west of-
Oh, that's the one, Country Club and Main.
No, just west of, twenty-nine West Main, the Zen City project.
Okay.
Just west of Center.
West of Center.
But, you know, and, and as Jeff said, retail follows rooftops, so I say you're three years away from a major grocery store. With all the development that's going on down here, I think you will eventually have the rooftops for it, but you don't, it's not even close.
Yeah, I, didn't Phoenix have to subsidize there?
Yeah, big time.
So did Tempe.
Yeah, well, we are going to have somebody in the retail, working with our economic development department in retail, looking to attract more high-quality restaurants and, and retail, so I would encourage you that once that program comes online, to, to utilize that expertise to see, see if we can get the market to respond to market. So, thank you.
Thank you, I think we're done.
Mayor, I must, I, I do have to follow just two things, one, one is the, a fun statement is that I'm going to record, get this recording of you saying that you're happy with the pace of the progress, because a few years ago, that's not what you said in your office to me. But I, I do, I should have gotten this out at the beginning, I think this is our third year of Nancy presenting. Unfortunately, Nancy's perfect track record ended this year, there was one letter of opposition to their assessment this year. One property owner did file an opposition representing point seven percent of the total assessment value of the, of the DMA, so that will be, since you are holding a public hearing on Monday, I wanted to make sure that we got that out there.
Was it the mayor asking for it?
It was not.
It's not enough. Not the mayor, but that, that's great, it's, democracy is alive and well at the DMA, so we'll look forward, hopefully that person will come and share their thoughts on Monday.
I do believe that we, we put the letter of opposition into your packet.
Okay.
I also want to say one thing, is that you say, you thank the DMA and Downtown Transformation team for everything that we've done. This is the city, I've worked in many cities, this is the favorite job I've ever had because of our relationship with the city, and this is, all these people sitting behind us and the departments in the city have been so wonderfully cooperative and working with us so hard, I cannot take credit for this. What we need to let you know is that your city staff is so great in helping downtown, that we've accomplished so much more than I have ever accomplished in this period of time, and it's because of the cooperation between the private sector and the public sector in this city. And I thank you all for that.
Great. Thank you, all right, we look forward to additional increased progress, Mr. Sprague. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda, item two B is a presentation and to discuss the purchase of the Grand Hotel for housing of the city's Off the Streets program. Ms. Lewis, good to have you with us, thank you for your hard work on this.
Thank you.
I think you just had a walkout.
Oh, you bet, I'm sorry, let's do, let's, let's reconvene at eight forty-five, so we can take care of business. The agenda that we have for this meeting, as we indicated, the next item on our agenda, item two B is a presentation and to discuss the purchase of the Grand Hotel for housing the city's Off the Streets program. Deputy Manager Natalie Lewis, welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having me this morning, Mayor, and members of the city council. I am here to talk to you about a long-term proposal for the Off the Streets program, which involves purchasing potentially a hotel using the federal funding that we've been provided. But before I dive into the presentation, I, I wanted to just step back about three years with the city council, we have a couple council members who are new since, since the pandemic happened, but I want to, I want to just take us through the, the major steps that happened to kind of get us to where we are today, and why we're here before you. And early in the pandemic, this was a time period, it was incredibly frustrating and, and scary for cities and towns, because we didn't know what was going to happen with COVID, and we were getting some information from the federal government, and it was changing daily, and it was hard on our staff, and we were repurposing them for different things, and, and you might remember that we did a survey, we went and did a community survey, because the first thing, we knew there were going to be fund, there was going to be funds coming our way, but we wanted to make sure we were responding and using those funds in the way that our community needed. And so two of the things that came out, first, the first and foremost was really helping with food insecurity, and that's why the Feeding Mesa program came on board and was incredibly helpful during the pandemic. The second thing was this need for isolation, for health and safety, not only of people in need like homeless, but also the fear at the time that we were going to be spreading the disease if, if we didn't help that. And so the seed for this idea really came from the county upfront, because the county, before we even got CARES funds, said, we're going to go and rent a hotel in downtown Mesa, they really just rented twelve rooms, and they hired some private security, and they talked with us and said, if you guys will fill it and operate it, this is what we'll do. So we, we gave it a try. We found pretty quickly that it was, it was an interesting idea, we thought we needed to do a better job of connecting people to services, and we very much felt that the private security option just did not work. We had major issues and they were really not helpful. We had major issues and they were really not helpful in that, in that thing. So the other thing that we did during COVID is we had weekly updates to the city council. They came out, we gave you CARES updates and we talked about things. And so while we were doing this, we thought, you know, why don't we just rent our own rooms? We have a lot of hotels in Mesa, they're empty right now, they need our help, we can use CARES dollars, you know, let's see what we do. And so we did that. And we had a really good relationship with a hotelier in the east part of Mesa, which was also something the council wanted us to do. So we started with a three-month pilot program, 25 rooms. And over time, and we really stood that program up almost overnight. Erin Rain was a huge proponent and help during that time period. But we had 25 rooms, we were planning for three months. Pretty soon, we could see that it was really working well, and so we extended it to six months. And then all of a sudden, it was, the council said, let's keep, let's do it another year. So we took it all in 2021, we kept the service moving. And we just kept making the program better and better as time went up. And so today, we're at the Windermere, we have 85 rooms. We focus more on our vulnerable populations, women, minors and seniors. And I was doing some of the math with, you know, the program and the data that we've been able to gather. And, and if you count those three populations, women, minors and seniors, it basically represents four out of five of our participants at the hotel today. So we're doing a good job of focusing on people with those highest needs. We've done a lot of other things to remove barriers, like created pet rooms because some people just didn't want to get help if they had to be separated from their pets. We've created onboarding rooms, so there's multiple beds in a room so that if people are coming in and we can put them and place them there until we get them into a permanent room or vice versa. If they're leaving the program, we can get that room available for someone else. We created another room that we called our Dusk to Dawn, which is basically a whole bunch of cots. And it's another way for inboarding people that are coming in. And all of these things helped us make sure that we were focusing on our priorities in Mesa. And, and so the other thing that was happening just in the world is that lots of different cities across the country were starting to talk about leasing these rooms and getting involved. And later and today, you're seeing them purchasing hotels. I think LA was the first in the country. They now have 16 hotels or apartments that they've, they've purchased. San Diego purchased three, King County near Seattle, five hotels, Dallas, three, Austin, five. And even states are getting involved and, and purchasing hotels. Locally and in the region, there's a lot of work going on too. Of course Mesa's looking at it. Tempe already purchased one hotel, is looking at another one. Phoenix is in the process of, of looking and they've got some issues in their downtown that they're looking for those too. Avondale and Surprise are trying to, to create and actually Surprise has already created transitional housing and Avondale is falling in that, in that footsteps. In the, in the state, Flagstaff, Cottonwood, lots of work toward making these, this kind of a program in the foreseeable future more long-term because we learned so much during the pandemic. And while cities and towns weren't the experts when we got into this, we are now. We learned so very much during this time period. So it was also during this time, Mayor, I don't know if you remember this, when everything was, was all pounding and happening all around us, but you said, hey Natalie, in your spare time, will you please draft a strategic plan for addressing homelessness? I remember that.
I remember that, yeah.
And you said no.
I said, I, well, you know, I did have a conversation with Mr. Brady because I said, you know, I love our mayor, but he's driving me crazy. Because you did not give up on it. Because I kept thinking, oh, he'll forget. No, he did not forget. But, you know, it was actually brilliant because it did help us really think about our strategy and prioritizing these federal dollars in really high needs. And it ended up with our, our key strategy of the Housing Path Recovery. And that has been an enormous tool as we've moved forward. And what we have found with this Off the Streets program is that it's essential, it's an essential part of the Housing Path Recovery that was really missing before the pandemic because we needed a place to put people immediately. We needed a place to really get them stabilized and into a point where they were ready to make a commitment to a long-term recovery and process. And, and so I think that's why we're seeing a lot of success and it's helping the rest of the system. So I also wanted to just point out to council that this tool has allowed us to provide another tool for our, our police officers and our park rangers and our community court because, you know, they have priority over getting people into the hotel. Community court participants who are homeless are more likely to be successful at community court if they have some, a stable environment that they're, that they're in. So we've been able to do a lot of things. So today now we have ARPA funds. And the focus of the ARPA funds is really on long-term infrastructure projects. And so we have been looking into a hotel. The Windermere is not for sale. And so in 2022, we started exploring what was available east of Gilbert Road. And we did look at purchasing the Sleep Inn at Superstition Springs Mall. There was a deep restriction there, so that didn't work out. And we could not find any other hotels, but we were fortunate because the broker that worked with us on the Sleep Inn knew of this owner and he approached him. And so they proactively came to us. So this hotel that we're talking about today was never actively on the market, but it is honestly to me, I was happy we didn't get the Sleep Inn because I think it's a better fit for what we need and, and where we're going. And so it's with that history in mind that kind of brought us to where we are today that I wanted to go ahead and let you know what we're thinking about for this particular purchase of this hotel. So on Monday and on your account, on your agenda is the formal action to approve a resolution to authorize the execution of a agreement to purchase the hotel at 6733 East Main Street. And we could talk about it there as well if we need to. I wanted to remind you of the Housing Path Recovery that I already talked about, the circled one in orange. This is where Off the Streets sits. The yellow is really more of our traditional shelters. In the middle is our, basically our success stories and transitional housing and where we're going. And you guys will see a RFP and some results coming back soon because that's also an area where we need some resources. And then it gets into our vouchers and rent assistance. And when we went through ERAP and all the things that were happening, this was feeding this piece of the puzzle. And then eventually to independents and, and people leaving, unliving at the, at the market. So why purchase instead of continuing to lease? First and foremost, we have the federal funding that's available to us. And secondly, the city is accountable for how that funding is spent. And so we need to make absolutely certain that we're, that we're following that and, and measuring along the way. Second, it helps Mesa enforce our urban camping laws. Martin v Boise came out a few years ago and basically said that it's not illegal to sleep in public. And urban camping became one of those things that we were not enforcing. And our people, our legal department, our police department got together, they did a lot of analysis on everything and they came up with a solution that if we could provide a bed, if we could guarantee and offer a bed to someone and they refused it, we could enforce. So this program became a key proponent to being able to enforce urban camping and, and it continues to be today. Next, this is what we feel is the right size and the right location. It is right next to transit, lots of connections to transit. It's generally in a commercial area. And, and it's right on Main Street, just like a, a mile and a half up from the Windermere, which will help us in our transition. It's a little smaller than what we're doing right now, but we feel like it works.
I don't mean to interrupt, but help you in the transition. So is the plan to put them in the tran, in the Windermere and then transition them here?
Precisely.
We have not made the decision about, because I want to be very clear, the homeless solution is only going to, challenge is only going to get more difficult. We, I was just at a MAGD meeting yesterday and they were talking about rising rents on lower vacancies or shorter, or no vacancies. And so the projection is based on the point of town, count time, point in time.
Points in time count.
MAG's warning all the cities that this is continuing to grow. So we're not going to leave the option for leasing. I mean, it's going to take us a while if we're to purchase this and go through the idea of purchasing it, renovating it, getting it ready, but it's only 70 rooms. We have 85 today.
Right.
And if, and I would say to the city, I think for the, we don't believe it's going to get, the demand for homeless shelter is going to get less. So I think we want to keep open the option to continue leasing, at least for some period of time until we can open up the new hotel. And then I think we would go for a period of time just to see what our, what the needs are because this is so important from a public safety standpoint. We did start off as a, addressing COVID and isolating individuals, but during that time was when the Boise v Martin case came down, ruling came down, and it became critically important for us to be able to say, we always have a room every night when a police officer or a park ranger is out there and talking to someone who's sleeping in a park. If those rooms are full, they, they're left in the park, they're left, you know, on the bus stop because we don't have the option to be able to enforce. So I want to be careful that we're suggesting that, at least in my perspective, you always want to keep all of your options open. If the trend is telling us and what the experts are telling us, especially with what's happening right now at the border, with what's happening with rent, that this is not going to get simpler, it's going to get more difficult and the demand is going to be greater, I would just caution us into thinking that we need to go from 85 to 60 and that's a better solution. I just don't, I would just caution the city that frankly, we need to look at 60 and plus and figure out where we go from there.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Summers.
Yeah. And in the presentation, could we, as you go through it, talk specifically about what this is for and not so much? Because the issue you're talking about on the border and the drugs and the fentanyl and everything else, there are different solutions we have to approach for that. This is something different. So if we could just talk about what, what this is so people know what it is.
Mayor, Councilmember Summers, and we will talk about this in the presentation.
Ms. Go, go forth. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Before we proceed, go ahead, Ms. Billings.
Well, I was just going to ask you, you were talking about Martin versus City of Boise. Do we have data? Does the police, I would assume enforcement, have data of the number of times there's not been a room available? So a person has been left in the public space.
Well, the good news is, prior to having the Windermere, yes, we often did have, we didn't have a place to take them because they were limited to what it was like, a dozen rooms possibly that were somewhere around the city. Since then, the good news is we've had the 80 plus of the Windermere. And I, I know there's been, sometimes we've been full, but I don't know that it's, I haven't heard that that's been an overwhelming problem because we've had those rooms.
Yes.
But there are times, and I don't know what our occupancy is today, but it kind of goes back and forth.
We are always full. We are always full, but what we have done is with those.
We're always full.
We're always full, but we have those rooms that have several beds and we have the cots. So having those two has basically taken care of that issue for us. And I've never, I've not heard personally that we've had any issues from our police department on that most recently.
Ms. Billings.
My question fits with this, so that's why I might jump in. I, I think I've known that we've been full, but do we have a waiting list? Like, is it hard to get in? Does it take months? I was talking to someone, CAS just started coming to Mesa to do some, just screening, navigation stuff. And what I was told was that it, it could be like a six-month wait before they could even get a bed somewhere. So then it made me wonder what our Off the Streets program waiting list is.
We don't have a, Mayor, Councilmember Summers, I, Spillsberry, I don't think, I don't think we do have a waiting list. But what we do use is our, that area with cots and with, we use that as a place for onboarding.
For the open beds.
And so that we can wait until we get to open beds.
But as far as like a waiting list to get into the hotel.
Do we have a waiting list?
So, good morning, Councilmember. Yes. Well, CBI does keep a waiting list of people that we are getting, so right now we have the Mesa Resource Line, the Homeless Resource, Resource Line. And we are referring people there and so, and then they're getting their own people coming in. So they do have a, a small waitlist. It can take time because, but those folks are then also accessing other types of shelter typically. So they do cycle through and call the waitlist and get people in as fast as they can. Typically, it's not six months, it would be up to a month though. We have had times that is happening.
But that doesn't mean that they're like sleeping in a park for a month. They're probably using some kind of shelters before.
It's possible.
Okay.
And what's nice about this program, I think it's different. I think we just make it clear and I think you'll see it in the, in the study, in the statistics of who's coming to, where, these are individuals that are willing to be helped, right? We, we can't compel somebody to go to the hotel, but we offer it. And we always have to be able to offer it because that's the issue. We can't offer a room that we can't enforce. So the opportunity to, which is a big step, that we can say, are you willing? We have something available. And they're like, that'd be great, well, wonderful. We, the idea is trying to accommodate that. But if they say no, then, then the officer has, you know, then they can get them to move along or whatever the urban campaigning ordinance or enforcement can take place. But again, I would just say, I think where it's not like we're half empty, we're, what, from a transitional operational side, I would say we're, we're using every room as much as we can. We purposely try to hold rooms open so we can continue to infer, enforce the urban camping. If not, we would be in violation of the court ruling.
And do, do we double up on rooms? I can't remember, or are we single occupancy?
Councilmember Spillsberry, we are working to start that.
Okay. I remember a conversation about that. Okay.
So federal funding, helping Mesa enforce urban camping laws, right size, right location, transit connections. Also, doing it this way allows Mesa control. So if the council decides at some point that we want to sell this hotel, you'd be able to do that. We also work very hard with community bridges. They provide all of the operations and the assistance and services to our, to our clients. But we have the ability to really override and look at the rules that they're, that they have, make sure it meets what we need and that the program stays quality and consistent. We've got standard operating procedures, lots of things that we have done for oversight that have helped this be a better and more successful program. And we'll talk a little bit about that later.
And Natalie, you're going to bring up the idea, this is not intended to be a long-term solution too, right?
Correct. Yes. So it also allows us to focus on Mesa priorities, which I've talked about, you know, our police department, our park rangers who are out there all the time, you guys have seen those things, but our vulnerable populations of, of people. And one of the things, when you guys were talking about a waitlist, we have been working with East Valley Men's Center as well, and we've created capacity there using CARES dollars at the time. And, and so what we try to do is get men shifted over there as soon as possible. And, and so there's a good partnership there and that releases rooms and helps us really focus on the most vulnerable populations and people with disabilities.
So I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Brady, when you say this is not a long-term solution.
Oh, sorry. It's not a long-term stay solution. How's that?
So the folks that will be in this shelter is not indefinite.
It's not, the stay at, it's not intended to be for months, right? It's intended to stabilize, get them connected with services and then move on.
And then hopefully they're progressing on to the transitional housing in your chart.
There you go. Sorry, Mayor.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Ms. Duff.
Well, since we brought up the transitional housing on the prior slide, I think it was number three, it says RFP issued.
Going to be issued.
Transitional support for greater independence for the transitional housing, RFP issued summer. So what is that plan?
So we are working with community services and the funding source is the Community Development Block grant coronavirus dollars and they are, they're very situated. Development Block grant coronavirus dollars, and they are, they're very situated towards this type of service. We have a little over $5 million there, and so what, and I have a, a budget with ARPA dollars. And so what we're going to do is combine those two funding sources and go out for a transitional housing project and focused on an East Mesa solution as we move forward. So.
What does that mean?
So we came to council, we came to council a month ago, because remember, these were federal dollars, so we got, we had to go through that community outreach survey, and then we had to send that to HUD, and that was that $5 million. And we indicated we were going to take that $5 million and leverage it or pair it up with the ARPA dollars to address a transitional housing permanent solution in Mesa on the east side. So that we would have, we were missing that gap, and it became very important that we have these off-the-streets, we have these congregate shelters at the men's shelter. But what we're missing is, and we have the voucher program trying to get people into housing, but we didn't have the kind of the step in between. So we are out having conversations with the nonprofits and creating this, a process to identify an opportunity where we can, we can work with nonprofits to create a permanent transitional housing option between the emergency shelter and the permanent shelters.
And Councilmember, go forth. When we say East Mesa, in our minds, we're looking east of Gilbert Road.
And what you're talking about is, is purchasing more housing? I mean, is that what you're saying? I, I get you're not really.
That we're leaving that kind of up to the nonprofit's talus. It could be. I mean, ideally, it might be an existing facility that, that we, they could go in and manage, and you could, the idea is to kind of go from more of a, I wouldn't say it was always congregate, but more where individual experience in the shelter, because they're showing progress. They, they maybe have a job now, they've, you know, dealt with any addictions or whatever, and we're helping them to kind of stabilize so they can move to the next step of permanent housing.
I guess I'm, I'm trying to figure out where the city's participation is that, in that.
Purchasing the.
We are owning the facility.
Well, we will work with the nonprofits, whatever works best.
Okay.
I mean, we will be putting up the capital dollars, and we've allocated, what are we at?
Close, well, close to $10 million.
$10 million for, to address that in the step. So we're combining that with the, the dollars we just identified, brought to council, plus the ARPA dollars. That's always been in the ARPA program is transitional housing. So combining those, we think that $10 to $12 million, pro, putting that out on this, out there for the RFP to work with, a collaboration with nonprofits, to create a transitional housing option.
And you're saying that's where the gap is?
Right, yeah, right. We don't have, we don't have that. And that came up, not just from us, that came out from when they, the consultant did the survey with the nonprofits and the community in that business, that was the number one issue that kept rising to the top, is we just don't have this transitional housing option.
And that's in addition to expanding the East Valley, putting transitional housing on the campus of the East Valley Men's Shelter.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the, I'm sorry, one more question about that. The RFP issued summer, the RFP has been issued?
No, this summer.
Or is going to, this summer, this summer? Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. So the other thing that we are experiencing is that leasing costs are rising, and we have an agreement with the Windermere. They've been an amazing partner with us. They have not indicated that, that they want us to leave. They love working with this program. However, we do have a 90-day out in that, they do as well. So we just want to make sure that if this is a program that we want to continue, and council wants to continue for a longer period of time, that we have, we have, we're not vulnerable to, to that and to market conditions.
Sure. Excuse me, Natalie.
Natalie, sorry, when you bring up costs, what are our current costs at the Windermere today? What, what is our lease payment or?
Ballpark, yeah. I'll just give you a ballpark, about $1.7 million a year.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize, I asked the one question and it just.
Yes.
It all came out, yeah, that's my fault.
I told you I'd forgive you.
Where does that money come from? Is that all grant, home, ARPA, or is it general fund?
Today, it is ARPA.
So it's all ARPA? So we're not paying anything out of local sales taxes, property taxes? This is all passed through grants?
For the Windermere and the lease.
For the Windermere. Okay, thank you.
Well, hold on. The lease and the contract with CBI.
Yes.
The public safety is paid for by the city.
Correct.
So, and, ARPA will end, and we will just, we'll have to, we're going to have to start building in that impact to the general fund. Now, I think we could look at, and you all know how competitive CDVG dollars are, but we would look at opportunities to utilize some of those. But this is a big amount that would pull out of CDVG, but we could, I think we could justify some portion of that. But most likely, as we move forward, we'll start transitioning, I think, I'm assuming, where more of the, some of this cost will transition to, to the general fund, especially on the operational. Well, it's already, we're already covering the public safety side, so somewhere in that operational side, it'll cost us. So one of the reasons that we're interested in a purchase is it allows us to use the federal dollars that we have now, a generational time. We've never had the federal government drop $105 million into our bank account literally overnight, and then tell us how to spend it. And this gives us an opportunity to do that now. We talked about trying to prepay leases with the Windermere, that wouldn't work. So we've had to come up with a solution that if we can buy a property, it gives us that long-term opportunity. We're not paying lease payments into the future that would ultimately, ARPA will expire, we'd have to pick up those lease payments. Even if Windermere keeps going, we're going to have to eventually transition that to, to some other source of funding. So using the ARPA dollars now to both acquire and do all the improvements and the security that we need at this facility, this is the time for us, we think we can make that investment. And then we're just dealing mostly with O and M going forward.
Mr. Freeman.
Chris, if you could just break down those costs for us.
Sure. I know there's about $800,000 of that goes to public safety.
Yes, so $1.7 for the Windermere, the lease, usually between $1.2 and $1.4 for operations with CBI, and, and about $800,000 for the police security.
Maybe in a future agenda, we could, or topic, we can talk about this more. I don't want to dive into it. Just the breakdown of the costs and.
That would be it.
That's it.
Public safety, $800,000, $1.2 million, we contract with CBI, and $1.7.
And that comes out of the general fund?
The public safety part, it's not eligible under the federal dollars for reimbursement.
Okay.
But absolutely crucial to this program.
Absolutely crucial, yes.
But you're going to be spending that money on public safety either there or somewhere else.
Right.
To deal with this population, and then probably a multiplier of it if you don't have the services.
Well, and Councilmember Spillsberry, remember, when we put the police officer out there, it actually made the neighborhood safer.
Yeah.
And we started getting calls because, and with the response time was vastly improved. So it wasn't necessarily what was happening at the Windermere, it was they were able to go and address issues that were already taking place in the existing neighborhood. So, yeah. Actually, we hope that what, by being in a neighborhood, it actually becomes safer because now we've got a police officer right there.
All right, Natalie, let's try this again.
So I also wanted to make the point to council that once you allow us to enter into this purchase contract, our goal and what we've written into the, to the agreement itself is that we will not close until we come back to city council and get approval on a council use permit. So that will come back to you in the fall. And the council use permit is a very thorough, open, transparent process with the community in that area, and anyone interested to help them understand what we're doing and why we think this is important. And, and Councilmember Spillsberry, I'll be working a lot with you during and within that project. We have worked really hard on data for Off the Streets and other homeless programs.
Sorry, I have to interrupt.
Sure.
So in discussing the council use permit in the fall, maybe a consideration of if we transfer, sell the property, that we can re, it can be revisited? I don't know what the right language is, Jim, I kind of mentioned that to you.
What's revisited?
The council use permit.
If we sell.
If we sell the property or transfer it in the future, that the council use permit can be reviewed at that time.
Yeah. And Mayor, Mayor and Council, and I think there's a couple of different situations where this could come up. And I think the concern is, is if, for whatever reason, the city decides that it doesn't want to continue using this property for this type of use, whether or not we do that somewhere else, that you don't want the council use permit to sort of survive in the hands of somebody else, that you really want it to then go back and be operated as a hotel if some future council wants that.
Yes.
And so with that kind of concept, and I can see a couple of different scenarios, and I can see a couple of different solutions, and so we can work on that.
Thank you.
So that is an option? I, you mentioned it before, because, because it's ARPA dollars, and those dollars are restricted.
So we're talking about two, two things, I think.
Okay.
We're talking about the land use that gives the entitlement to allow it to have social services at this location. That's why we have to do the.
Council use permit.
Okay.
Or about the wrong thing. So that's one thing, right? So it's different than the issue of the disposition of the property and how it gets used, or whether we can sell it or not. We can have it, I think we're working with the strings that are attached with ARPA dollars and the county dollars to give future flexibility of what that would look like if the, a future council said, for whatever reason, we're going to sell this property, then what would the constraints be? Typically, then you may have to take those dollars and either reimburse it back to the federal government or go use it for like purposes. Those have typically been the options that I've experienced with those dollars.
And Councilmember, go forth. We're working with the county right now. I don't think I've mentioned that the county, we have an amazing county, and they are a huge partner for the region and wanting to expand all types of housing for this particular purpose. And they have committed, well, not yet committed, but proposed to provide $4 million to the city for this purchase, also an ARPA dollar revenue. But within their, their agreement with us, which is something that we'd have an intergovernmental agreement, there is something in there that says that we have to keep using the, the property for a period of 10 years. And so we've been talking with them, and we suggested three things that we could change. So if we're using it and, and it goes for 10 years, that, that's great. If we transfer it to a nonprofit for the same kind of use, that would be okay. If we decide to sell it at some point, we would just repay their, their $4 million, which basically goes back to the federal government, and anything that we would get would go back to the federal government. So this is a dashboard in front of you, and Evan Allred has been just such a big help, and Nick in his office has basically created this. But it's been a huge tool for us to really understand what's happening at Off the Streets, and for us to fine-tune it and to continue to, to look at ways to make it even better. And so one of the things I want to point out here is the 74.7% success rate. This is really amazing, and we've been, what I would say, enjoying this kind of success rate on this program almost from the beginning. We've just gotten better and better at it. But, you know, before COVID, and without this step in the process in the industry, it was more like 30 to 40% success. So this is a, a new approach that hopefully, over time, will even strengthen how the more traditional shelters are performing, because they're receiving people that are ready for, and ready to start that next step. And so that part of this is, is also exciting for us.
Can you, I'm sorry, Natalie, can you define that again? The, the positive exit, the success?
So what we mean by positive exits is that they move on to their next point in the housing path to recovery. So sometimes that go, that's like, if it's a man, and he may go to the East Valley Men's Center, and, and they have a little, they have more stringent rules there. So they have to follow the rules, they have to get a job, they have to practice sobriety. And, and so our program allows them to get in without all of those rules, but to get them ready to make that sort of commitment. So by the time they get to the East Valley Men's Center, they're ready for that. And, you know, some people go to, you know, live with family again, because they've been able to reconnect. You know, some people go to other shelters in and around the valley. So it all depends on the person and, and where they go next, but our goal is warm transfer to where they need to go next.
It's not going back to the street.
Okay, I was going to ask that. 25%, that's what it is?
Yes.
They're going back to being homeless and, okay.
Unfortunately, yes.
But, but that is a surprisingly high number.
Yes.
I mean, compared, that, that gives me a lot of encouragement to continue to fund and increase funding for this program, just because I don't, I would have expected something far less than that. Ms. Spillsberry.
Oh, I said, can you just, I know you, you've probably said it along the way, but just, what do you attribute that to?
What do I attribute?
That success rate.
Well, you know, I think it, I think it's a couple of things. Number one, we really have a great model. It's a very good model, and, and it's been fine-tuned over time, and I think that's, that's a big part of it, and.
Which is different, it's a unique model?
It's, it's new since COVID. It's new.
But I mean, it's unique to other emergency housing models?
Everybody's, look at, everybody's standing up different models, right? Everybody's doing this, and everybody's learning. I think what's different in the model, it's not a congregate housing model, where a lot of individuals, why they're downtown Phoenix, right? It's, it's a lot of those shelters are congregate housing, and some people just would, don't want to be under one roof with a lot of different people that they don't know. And so, and part of it is they may not want to follow the rules either, but at least here, having a hotel room, and, and when you show up, there's services, right? There's a navigator, you're assigned a navigator. And I think, to me, that we've always talked about, we, we're not going to be in the business of just putting you up. We're going to know your name, we're going to know who you are, where you came from, and we're going to connect you with services. That's always been our model. And when we talk about transitional housing, that's been our biggest issue with the nonprofits is, just don't tell us how you can build buildings. We really want to know more about what are all the wraparound services? Because that's what's going to win the day for us. I mean, it's the shelter, but it's more about, how are you going to help individuals transition, right? That's the whole point. So we emphasize that over and over again in this model is, and that's why we're paying CBI $1.2 million, right? It's, it's, the idea is them getting these individuals connected with whatever service they might be. And I, it could be from getting their IDs, it could be addictive services, it could be any variety of services that they need. And CBI is very good at this, and so they have assigned navigators to help us out.
And the only, the other thing that we do is, while CBI does provide that onsite and that one-on-one support while they're there, we take them off-campus for services. The last thing we wanted to do was have a whole bunch of services on campus and start attracting people to the campus. This is referral-based. You can't just walk up to the door and say, I want in. There has to be a process, because we do have those priorities, and we don't want to create, we feel like that creates a negative problem for the neighborhood.
Was that a lesson learned, or was it a start that way?
That is a lesson learned from.
Well, watching others, for sure.
The, the Central Arizonic Shelter System.
We've always told CBI, we'll buy as many vans as you need.
Yeah.
To get people connected, because we don't want it happening at the location.
Thank you.
Well, and before I ask my question, I, I would make the comment too, like, that, I think that is the difference, is that a lot of people want to just group homeless people into one category, but we know every single one of them has a different story, why they're homeless. And so I do think that is the difference. No, it's not just pouring money at homeless people. We know from a lot of other places, that's not the solution. So it's what are you doing with that money? And I think having the navigators, having accountability, having a connection with someone that cares, right? Like, all of that is what's making this successful. It's not, I mean, we, as the city, I think that is our role, is to make sure we have the beds, and, but then we're not going to run the programs, because there's people that do it better. And so I do think the navigator, the connections, the accountability, community court, like, all of those things make that person feel like someone cares, and so they're more likely to try to get better and be successful, but.
Well said.
So I do have a question, did you, were you wanting to add something to that?
Well, I was just wondering, I mean, a CBI success rate wherever else is not as high? I mean, because they, like you, they're the ones running the program.
They are.
So how is this any different than what they do?
So before, before these kinds of models were available, they were placing people into those traditional shelters. And what was happening is the, that people weren't quite ready, you know, for whatever reason. And maybe they have addictions, and they weren't ready to deal with that. Maybe they didn't really feel like they wanted to go get a job at the, at that moment, and they just didn't want to deal with that. And so CBI was, was doing their work to navigate, help, and get them to this location, but there wasn't that readiness factor. And so what this step has done, it's like a pre-shelter. It helps people get ready, and get stable, and get to a point, even if they have addiction issues, we're taking them off-site to get those, that help, and getting them to a point where they're actually making better judgments and decisions for themselves, and say, I want to keep doing this.
So it's kind of a housing first? Is it a housing first model, where?
It is part of a housing first model, absolutely.
I think the model, yes, it is. I think truly is, and Councilwoman Spillsbury said it, it's like everybody has a different story. And so you need, and I think it may be scaling too, a lot of this is that we can have CBI, and we have, you know, 80 people, they can have that connection and work with that individual, on their individual story to help them out. And I think that's how we tried to address it, versus someone just being in a very large congregate setting, and it's not as easy to have. So I would say probably, I suspect, our per capita cost per homeless may be higher, but then we get the outcomes.
Our success is higher, yeah. So my question on, on the dashboard, really quick. The, the lower corner that says the primary reason for homelessness category, I noticed that in those five categories, there's not even a category for mental health, and so I just wondered, is that, are people filling this out, and we're giving them these options, we're not giving them the option for mental health? Because then the, next to it, I see that 37% have mental health issues, so I just wondered if that, is that not even an option to fill out for?
So all of the information that you're seeing here comes from the Homeless Management Information System, and, and.
And that's a regional.
It's a regional tool, where everybody has, has, is adding information, and what the outreach and navigators are asking is very consistent. And, and so the region is taking a look at all of that. But, you know, the quality of this, and that kind of, of an answer, depends on how the individual answers.
Right.
And not everybody is going to admit that that's something that they need, nor they could admit that they maybe have an alcohol addiction problem.
Exactly. Well, that's why I wondered if it was even an option for them to check, or if it comes out in the disability question, or whatever, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Summers.
Just real quickly, the one in four people that fail out of this program, are we tracking? What do we do with them? Are they just walking out the door into the neighborhood? Are they going to CAS? Is there some other resource that they're hitting? I'm pretty sure he didn't want to come up.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Yeah, that's a good question. So every person that's exited from the program is offered crisis services, whether it be addiction, like CEPEC or their, or EVARC, the, the CBI facilities. So every single person is offered either, it could be even CAS, depending on what their situation is, or domestic violence shelters, and they, the, the choice is theirs. Again, as has been said, we can't force people into, into shelter. So they're all offered that, but not everybody accepts that, but the vast majority do seek some sort of service, particularly when the weather is inclement, cold and hot, they'll, they'll more likely engage in that service.
Thank you. Okay, so the property, 6733 East Main Street. You can see from these photographs, there's a two-story component to it and a one-story component. That one story was built back in 1973, and then the two-story added in '85. Altogether, it is 70 rooms, it's on about 1.3 acres. It does have space for those desk-to-dawn beds that I was talking about earlier. There's office space, there's laundry facilities, there's transit close by, commercial jobs that are close by. The property owner has told us that there are new AC units, they have tankless water heaters, they, they've been making improvements to the roof. All of this will be verified in the process as we move forward. We also think that the single-story homes, because they're a little bit larger, could end up serving as transitional housing right there, so that people come from the two-story to the one-story, and then hopefully into an apartment on their own. We would have to make some tenant improvements, make sure that ADA requirements were, were met. We would have the ability to maximize the space, so even though there's 70 rooms, we could, we could double up beds, we could do things to make sure that we're, we have enough beds to, to suit our needs, and to always have the urban camping enforcement piece satisfied. So this is where it is located.
I'm sorry, Mr. Summers.
Do we, do we know, does this facility have fire protection systems?
I, we don't know that yet, and, but once we open escrow, we'll go through a due diligence period, and we will do a really deep dive into the entire facility and better understanding what restrictions there.
And we have no idea, from the last bullet point, we don't know what the ADA compliance of this facility is, right?
They, you know, hotels have to comply with ADA, so they do have the ability, and they have some of that, but we need to make sure that we have plenty of it, because a large portion of our, our clients have disabilities.
All right, well, I mean, we can talk about it later, but I've, I've seen two shelters closed down in Phoenix because they didn't have fire sprinklers. The fire marshal wouldn't, you can't have that kind of occupancy without them. So that's a cost we're going to have to consider.
Would it not be, you don't think it'd be, was it old, too old to be under that?
I think it's too old.
Okay.
Uh, I also think because it's only a two-story building, that the code back then, and this is built, what, 70s, 80s?
Yeah.
The code might not have required it, it's like you go to.
We'll have to, some will have to look at.
Yeah, you go to older apartments, and you find the same thing, they don't have fire sprinklers, the new ones do, so that's something, but it's a cost we have to look at.
Right, thank you.
Also a safety issue. I have a question, Natalie, on this, about a lot of the homelessness, they have pets, that'll be managed here as well, because I know that there's some costs incurred with pet.
Yep. We do that now, right?
Yes, we do that now. I think, I think some of the things that we would do is, we would have some rooms that had more beds than just one. We would have rooms that were very specific to ADA needs and requirements. We would have some rooms that were pre-designed for people with pets. So, you know, no carpet, and having some facilities and kennels in there for them to use. So we would have that as well. So those are some of the things that we will do to customize this, to be exactly what we need it to be.
Okay, thanks.
So it is located just west of Power Road and on Main Street. And so you can see the larger area in and around it, there's some county lands to the north, a lot of commercial when you're really close, and then to the south, there is a single-family neighborhood. This is a closer-up kind of picture for you. During the council use permit process, we are required to notify everyone, any property owner within 500 feet. The city is going to go to 1,000 feet to be safe, and anyone else that is interested, we will work with them on this. But you can see where it's at, and the pink is all limited commercial in and around it, and then to the south, as I pointed out, there's some, there's residential there. And, you know, staff has actually already been out into this neighborhood. They have some challenges, and, but we are trying to find ways to strengthen that neighborhood while we're here. We want to be a good neighbor, and we're going to talk more about that later. But while we're there, we want to, we want to lift this area and, and be, you know, help things be, get better.
I'll just make a, a point too, and I've brought this up to a few different people, but the empty retail shopping center on Power and Broadway is problematic. So I, I do have a concern with that, I think it's a Banner property, I've.
Oh, down south.
Yeah.
On Broadway, they're supposed to be redeveloping it.
Yeah, so anyways, there's a really nice Starbucks on the corner, but right behind it is, is rough and empty and vacant and not, anyway, so I, I worry a little bit about the Power and Main intersection and, and going into right there. Anyway, so I just thought I'd throw it out there so that we can keep an eye on it.
I'm glad you brought it up, because the other thing that happens is CBI will go out into the area already. They're going to go start looking and finding those kind of pockets, and, and trying to get people into the program, and be preventative in that way.
If we, if Banner would redevelop it, that would be great, so.
Yeah, they, they do need to do something, yeah.
So the next steps in this process is, starting now through September, we will be going through the council use permit process, which is that community engagement. We will be onsite doing a lot of due diligence to really understand what we're purchasing, and making sure that there aren't any red herrings that would cause us to, to move away from it. We will look at site improvement needs, we want to make sure that the outside looks nice, and maybe we need to add trees, maybe we need to do some other things to kind of create some better aesthetics, and so we'll be looking at that. And then we will start to look at planning for design and phasing of construction. September to mid-October, probably we would come back to council at that point with the recommendations from the council use permit, and then by the end of October, our goal would be to close on the property, and, and then at this winter, start more planning and pulling out the, the good neighbor policy, working with people in and around the area. And I want to talk a lot about that, because it's really important. So this is the good neighbor policy that in general, we already follow at the Wyndham Area. We will be working with the community, because there could be some unique and tailored items that we should be doing for them, but we will follow these things, and this policy will be a stipulation in the council use permit. So we will take it seriously, and we will make sure that there are checks and balances for, for the community if we're not following it. But some of them are, it's referral-based, we don't allow people to walk up or just drop in. We enforce a curfew, which is 10:00 p.m. each night. There is limited designated areas for outside use, we don't want there to be a parent that people are just hanging out on the space. And so we create a space for them, but try to make it less visible for the community surrounding. Community Bridges does daily checks in every single room, sometimes twice a day, to make sure there aren't problems going on, or things that they need to follow up on. Curfew for program participants after hours, I think I already mentioned, 10:00 p.m. We transport our clients off-campus, so that we're not creating incentives to gather and bring more people to the site. We work very hard, Councilmember Spillsbury mentioned, the police presence, we really believe that's part of the success of this program, and, and so we have that budgeted, and one person at least is onsite all the time. The Wyndham Area is a huge, open campus, this is going to be a much more secured campus, and so I think that will help us in our, in our coverage there. We will be allowing and working on trespass enforcement for surrounding businesses, like you were just talking about, on Main and Broadway. We will be doing a lot of community engagement, we want to make sure that there's an easy way for neighbors to call us if, if they need us. So this good neighbor policy is core to what we'll be doing, we'll be sharing it with the community, we will add to it if we, if we need to. All of these things are important to the success of the program and for Mesa.
I have a question. So the police presence, is that 24/7?
Right now, it's what I call 21/7.
Okay.
So there is a period, I think between 3:00 and 6:00 in the morning, but the, we did that in collaboration with the police department about when they felt like there was a real need at the site.
When we talked about this initially, with, when I, Natalie, you kind of mentioned maybe police presence all the time, now we are set on that.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I can't remember what we were talking about exactly, but yes, we, this comes with, this is part and parcel to this program, and its success, and we, we believe in it, and it's part of our model.
Can the, do the police have to be in a police-marked car when they're there?
Kind of their tool, I don't know, do they have to be?
Yeah, I'm just looking at Commander Cutler, he said, no, they do not.
But, but do they usually show up with their cruiser? I guess that's my question, I mean.
You're looking for that visual.
Yeah, I, I just think it, you know.
Oh, right.
It helps with the presence, optics, you know, that there is a, I mean, otherwise you don't know, I mean, how would you know?
Mayor, Council, Councilwoman, go forth, yeah, we usually have a car there, they're not required, you know, to work, to work those jobs in a police car, but.
Yeah.
We, we feel that the car would be the deterrent that we see a police presence.
We can also grab one of those patrol cars, put it out in front of the malls during Christmas, and put it out there.
Yes.
Sometimes, though, people think a police car means there's something bad going on there too, so, I mean, it could go both ways.
Just don't turn on the lights on.
Right.
Yeah, but you're, it's.
That's actually a really good point.
I think when there's 10 police cars, you get that. When there's one police car, you kind of go, oh, I'm glad they're there.
So with that, the request will come before you on Monday, and we will be back in touch with you. I'll be working very closely with you, Councilmember Spillsbury, as we go through the CUP process, and do you have any other questions?
Thank you, Council. Questions? Mr. Summers.
I just want to, we're going to have more conversations, I think, about this, and some have been brought up today about how, how it's going to operate, how we're going to fund the operations for operations and maintenance. I know our city attorney is working on some issues related to the funding, particularly the, the federal funding comes with some encumbrances, to say the least, and how we can use this property, and Jim, I appreciate your work, because I've had a meeting with him already, and I like the direction, but when you buy a house, and I know this is not a house, this is not the best example, you purchase a house, and then you have an appraisal of that facility, and then they, they look at the house, and they say, yes or no, it meets this, this valuation. Are we going to have that kind of an appraisal done, once we're able to get into the facility, look at it, see what kind of upgrades are made, and, and then figure out what the market rate is for this facility, or is this amount of money set?
So what happened in the process to negotiate with, with the owner to date is, is a combination of negotiations with them, but also with process requirements. And so they came to us and offered $8.5 million. We said we're interested, but we need to go through an appraisal process. So we went through an appraisal process with a professional company to do that. The federal process requires us to do a review of that appraisal before we, we take that number. So the number that came back at that point is that the value is 6.48 million, and, and so we continued our discussions with the owner, and basically landed in the middle at 7.44 million. So that is the number, when you say it's done, that's the number that is.
How did the owner come up with a value for this property as a hotel at 8.5 million? It's either 70 rooms or 69, depends on, is it 70 or 69? Because the appraisal that we have says 69.
Yes, at the time, we thought it was 69, then he clarified it's 70, because they used one room for storage.
Okay, so we can upgrade that room. But how, how did he come up with a valuation of 8.5 million for a piece of property he bought two years prior for 3.75?
So we didn't ask him a lot of questions about that, we just got our own appraisal.
We, we just ran past that.
Well, it's, no, I mean, this is negotiations, right? And it's like anybody trying to sell a piece of property, the property owner is going to try to get as much as he can.
Sure, sure.
We counter with an appraisal, and we're pretty far apart. It's a lot better price than the Spring Hill Suites that we were having.
Sleep in.
Sleep in, what did I say? Spring, sleep in. So we're thinking, we're, hey, we're in the ballpark, because the, the dollar amount is very similar to, or it's less than what we were before. We like the location, actually, the facility from the outside looks well-kept up, maintained, so it's just negotiation. We do this on a lot of different transactions across the city, when we're purchasing right away, you know, owners want, they're, you know, they, we've had owners go get their own appraisal and end up, you know, a lot more than ours. So, and appraisal is not an exact science, it's, so we.
But he, you answered a question, though, he approached the city. He said, I have a piece of property I'm willing to sell to you for.
But he knew the broker, the broker told them we were looking.
Correct.
Yeah.
So we were not able to do an assessment behind a straw man?
What, what do you mean by that?
Like that he.
They knew the city was coming, that this was going to be sold to the city.
When it comes to federal dollars, we don't, we don't do that, we don't do that.
Really? Because, I mean, this, this, yeah, I get the use, I mean, I'd rather not be in the business of owning properties for, you know, for the homeless, but I, I think we're kind of being forced in this direction. We have to do something. It is, it's a public health issue, it's a public safety issue, having these facilities is important, having successful facilities is important. The, the, the issue I have, it's, it's, it reminds me a little bit about, I don't know, 12 years ago, we were trying to purchase the, the new, a piece of property for the Fiesta substation. And we came out, and we said, we're looking for a piece of property, and somebody, I think it was an old Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, or, or something like that, they were willing to pay 6 million, they wanted $6 million for it, and Councilmember Finter at the time did an analysis, and it said, this property is worth half that. worth half that." So, then, we had to go back through, with the council agreed, we're gonna go back through, we're gonna get behind a straw man and look for what the property is. We finally did find a piece of property at a reasonable price, based more on the market. Because when I look at a market for a property like this, and I, you know, the good thing about being with Visit Mesa and even being a firefighter, seems like every firefighter has a second job. So, I know people who are in the hotel business. I know people who are, I even talked to someone who ran an assessment. I just gave him an address, not even telling him what it was for. And if this were gonna be purchased by an individual, they were gonna run it as a hotel, they would, the real property valuation, they took five sales in the last year and a half, and it came up to a value for this property estimated at $5.2. I mean, even our, even our own appraisal came in at $6.48, like you said. And we're willing to pay $7.44, and we still have to do upgrades. So, we're paying, we're paying above-market rate on what arguably is the height of the market, with even the appraisal mentioning in his economic report that we're likely to go into recession in next year. No guarantee of that, but it's possible. So, we're gonna be paying a lot of money for this property.
Two things, just for your consideration. When you say that we're paying above-market, I, when you look at the appraisal, they provide those comps that you were talking about. And when you're looking at a hotel, they talk about cost per key. And so, when we were looking at the Sleep Inn, for example, it was $120,000 cost per key. In this appraisal, it came in at anywhere between $52,000 cost per key, up to $113,000. And what we negotiated is $106,000. So, we still feel that is a good deal for the public and is within the market, based on the professional appraisal that was provided to us. And the other reason that we were very motivated to negotiate is we have not found any other hotels that are available. And like you said, we need to do something. And we need to find something to invest our federal dollars. So, there is a timeline here that we need to come move forward.
I understand that, but even though they're federal dollars, I think, you know, there's, we should be cautious with how we spend.
Absolutely.
It's still government money. It's still taxpayers' dollars. And the assessment that we paid for specifically was looking at comparisons across the state, by the way, because some of these aren't even in our market. And they were looking at hotels that were purchased, basically federal dollars that were all converted into shelters. And what they didn't do is an assessment in our own market of how much this would be if it was a hotel, because I got five of them here where the average key is more around $74, $544 a row.
So, if we were buying a hotel for a hotel's purpose, it would be a different appraisal.
There's no doubt, but we're paying more.
This happens to us all the time, when we're buying for public purpose. They appraise it at the use we're going to have for, not on what it's being used for. So, this is, this is the best professional, you know, we went through the process, we did an appraisal, we had to do a review appraisal requirement by the federal government. We did both of those. We had an investor owner who asked for eight and a half. We went back and forth, back and forth, multiple times. It wasn't just a one deal, if you recall. And we end up splitting the difference. We still think on the comps, on a per-unit basis, you know, not on the dollar amount for what other, you know, facilities that are being used for this purpose, it pencils out pretty close on average. Because there's just not a lot of comps, right? There's not a lot of hotels that have been converted, so there's not a lot of comps to go look. So, yes, they have to go stretch and look at Flagstaff, and they looked at Phoenix and Tempe. So, this is where we come to an agreement with the owners. This is the agreement we have in place, and that's where we're at.
And we're still nearly $1 million over what that assessment was.
Yeah, but we're, yes, we are. But that's, we, yeah, we, we negotiate all the time. We never, there are rarely times when we will be at the appraised value. Most sellers want more than that.
Yeah, this is, this is my heartburn, is we're taking an asset that arguably is generating sales tax revenue, we're taking it out of the market, and we're gonna use it for this purpose again. I don't want to, I don't disagree that we probably have to be in this sphere, we're just being driven in that direction. My issue is how much money we're paying for this facility. That said, if we have four votes to go ahead and purchase this property, I think some of what's been brought up in how we can make this a better neighbor, we can have that discussion in the CUP to make everybody comfortable. I just think this is way too much money. Thank you.
Mr. Freeman?
Thanks, Natalie. You know, I believe we're in this for the long term, you know? Homelessness is not gonna go away, and we have to be in front of it. And even if we're strategizing today to build and TI this hotel, we're probably at least two years away in probably getting, get any functioning programming, so we have to use Wyndham area. We still have to work on the hotel and get it ready to go. And, you know, as I've said in the past, I really don't want to be in the hotel business. I really don't want to be in the homeless business. However, I believe, you know, this is an asset to not only our public safety personnel, but to the professional services that we contract with to help facilitate homelessness and those that are experiencing that. And I believe in human kindness, you know? These are, these are real issues that others have been going through. And we have other means. I mean, we have enforcement availability if we so need. And even through enforcement and showing up at Mesa City Court, we have wraparound services there that if someone chooses, "Hey, you know, I made a mistake the first time. I should have taken the shelter the first time, and now, I'm showing up in court, now I can get services and help and, you know, relieve themselves and become, hopefully, somewhat self-reliant." So, you know, this is a conundrum for me. It's one of my favorite new words, not new, but because, well, I just see some goodness in this, and I'm glad it's in the East Valley and not the West Side, because you know what we've struggled with over the last number of years. And it's important to spread this out in our community, even though there are others that do not want this in their neighborhoods. But the focus is on this, that we do provide, and the city should provide some services for this. And I'm not a huge fan of using general fund dollars to fund all of this, so I'd like to look at other avenues to do that. And, you know, we'll have a discussion later. But for now, that's where I stand. We'll wait till Monday's vote.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. You know, when I started this job several years ago, I remember I would kind of intentionally, when given the opportunity to speak on this topic, say homelessness is a problem in Mesa, Arizona, because I wanted to elevate the issue, and I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of it and that we were dealing with it. That's not what I say anymore, and I don't think that's accurate. It's not an issue, it's the issue. Because if you go, if you go to any city of our size in Oregon, in Washington, in California, and you ask them to describe to you their experience with homelessness, it's overwhelming. It is far and away the issue. And the same is true in other parts of the country, the northeastern United States. You can't find one of those communities where there's not a ubiquitous homeless encampment in every piece of public property. And I'm not overstating this. I think we all know this. So, I think that's why I was a pain in Natalie's neck a few years ago, saying we have to have a strategic plan to address this. And we have a good plan. That's the easy part. The difficult part is implementing the plan and looking at the plan and saying, "We have this, but we don't have that. We need more transitional housing." If we're going to continue to be a city that's doing a good job in addressing homelessness and not, again, having tents everywhere in our city, we've got to comply with the Martin B. Boise requirement of having emergency shelter. So, I think we're doing a better-than-average job right now, but we're at risk of getting way behind. So, I think it's difficult to overreact to this issue. So, I, obviously, absolutely, we have to do this in a very professional way, and we need to protect the public funds. But I think any investment that we can make in this area is going to pay tremendous dividends over the short term and the long term. So, I am supportive of going forward with taking the next steps on Monday, and I'm looking forward to supporting this on Monday's agenda. Any other comments? We're going to, Mr. Summers? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I do need to leave. I have an appointment that I'm already late for. But in the effort to be nice, thank you for your, thank you for your work on this. I know you've been working very hard with staff, and you had to work with the mayor for two years, so I want to just show my appreciation for what staff is doing and try to tackle what's really incredibly difficult.
Thank you, and thank you for the tough questions.
All right. Thank you. So, this was, again, for, just so everyone's clear, this is on our agenda for Monday to move forward. All right. Any additional questions, counsel? All right. Thank you very much, Natalie, and everyone who's been involved in the Off the Streets program. I think we're all, again, as I talk with people around the country, our Off the Streets program, the numbers related to that, our community court program really stand out. And so, I'm very proud of the good work they're doing. Next item on our agenda, item three, is to acknowledge receipt of meeting minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Ms. Spillsbury. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That passed unanimously. Next is current events and conferences attended. Counsel members, anything you'd like to share with us? Mr. Freeman?
Well, thank you. I was able to attend ribbon-cutting for our Disabled American Veterans East Valley Chapter, and they had a grand opening there. So, grateful for them and all the work that they do to provide services to our disabled vets here in the Mesa area and actually, the surrounding area. And then, tonight, there's a firefighter graduation recruit, so we'll be over here at the IKEA Theater at 6:00 o'clock tonight. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Ms. Spillsbury? Oh, I'm sorry. Really? After I bragged about you last week?
I heard what you said. We were gone, and we heard what you said, and I took it as a compliment that Councilwoman Duff and I are so engaged in the community.
I was lamenting, you know, that you weren't here to share with us.
I don't know how you guys survived. It looked like a very boring meeting.
It was, it was, I slept through the whole thing, actually.
Well, I'm glad we're back here to create a little bit of excitement about what's going on in the community. Yes, we do watch all the meetings while we're away, so nothing escapes us. I did just come back from my trip, but yesterday, I did attend ASU Centana President's Summit. It's university presidents from around the world and talking about transforming place. And there was a discussion about the ASU Mix Center and the city of Mesa and what that has meant to our city. And I was glad to be on the panel to represent the work that has been done by all. And that's all I had time for in the 24 hours I've been back.
We look forward to a longer report.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any other reports?
Tomorrow, we're hosting a spring blast at Rhodes Junior High from 5:00 to 7:00. Free food, music, free FlowRider, we hope, and free swim for everybody. So, come out, 5:00 to 7:00, Rhodes Junior High in West Mesa.
That's always a great event, very well-attended, and people really love the FlowRider.
I attended with you, Mary Jones, the Mesa Leadership Graduation in Holly. You were there. That was great. It was a great group of people, and I'm anxious to see what they, all those graduates get involved with and use those, use the information that they learn and their leadership skills for the benefit of our residents. And then, I went on an SRP watershed tour. That was fantastic. Thank you to SRP. Very informative to see sources of our water and from that perspective. And so, I feel like I'm educating myself and know a lot more about it. So, anyway, that was great.
Thank you. I think most of us have, if everybody had that opportunity, yeah, we're glad you have seen that. It's important. Anything else, counsel?
Can I mention one thing that's going on in downtown Mesa on Saturday is a historic preservation event? And there'll be some presentations and some awards on essays around historic preservation. There will also be a walking tour, scavenger hunt, and prizes around that at 10:30 at the Nile. Thank you.
Thank you. I ought to report that I spent a couple of days, the first part of this week, in Washington, DC, working one day on Gateway Airport issues and had the privilege of meeting with our entire congressional delegation, and they're all very supportive of the help, the federal government assistance that we need to continue to see that airport thrive. Also, spent another day as a part of it. I'm the chairman of a group called Mayors and CEOs for Housing Investment, and again, met with a lot of the nation's leaders on housing and homelessness issues, and that was, again, was very relevant to the discussion that we had today about how this issue is becoming more and more important everywhere and including in our city. So, had a productive couple of days in the capital earlier this week. And we hope to have more productive days in our state's capital. We're still, as you know, there's a lot still going on behind the scenes. I appreciate all the, our intergoves and the folks that are working with us to try to get Proposition 400 again on the ballot, and we'll be working on that today, and hopefully, we'll see some success in that. Counsel, anything else you'd like to share with us? Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, we do have a council meeting on Monday, May 15th at 5:45. We'll have our 5:15 study session. Also, just remind counsel that a week from today, we'll be having a joint meeting with Mesa Public Schools, and we'll get more information out, but it'll be at their governing boardroom office stately, and so, we'll get you that information. But that'll be a week from this Thursday. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. That completes our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Ms. Spillsbury. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. We are adjourned.